Sydney.
Oh, here it goes. Why you say that?
I was a bit wrong in there somewhere. Never had to go on.
It's a guy here from Detroit.
Mitchell.
He is tired, stopped, and he was jacking it up and it sank into the black.
Really? That happens in the third of the summer in the heat.
He's there. One of them is at least online. He's gonna call in as well. Charles, if you're online, Cindy's running late. I don't know if you wanna kick it off as VP or if you wanna just.
How, how late is she running?
Uh, she called me just before I walked in the room a minute ago and said she's leaving her home now, so she's probably gonna be here in three to five minutes.
Um, let's give her until three oh five, if that's okay. Hit with the rest of the board and then we'll, we'll call the meeting to order and kick it off. Unless anyone feels we just wanna dig into owner comments to get those out of the way. I'm open to.
Maybe she wants to hear the owner's comments.
All right, why don't, why don't we give her, let's give her till three oh two now, let's give her three more minutes and then we'll, we'll start the meeting off.
No school traffic, she should be here.
I don't think there's traffic, we're, we're on break right now, so.
Hello.
It's Mark Kramer from Patrol and Services.
Hey, Mark, uh, our president's running a bit late. We're gonna wait till three oh five and then we kick things off.
Oh, that helps me tremendously. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, thanks for joining.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
I have mine. My brand new printer printed it.
Yeah, the other kids have their.
She's doing good, thanks.
They both got.
She's up to two miles a day.
I mean, I would.
Lauren, do you know? They've signed, uh, they've, the vigilance contract was signed.
She's in the day after the board meeting.
I remember, so I was, yeah, I was in sales club.
Last Thursday.
Cool. Sure, there, doing your.
Summer, is.
Early, but, yeah, why not? And then it was like everyone, I'm gonna go get our stuff next week. Oh, yeah, my folks just got that. Just, 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 yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll kick it off in sixty seconds, Lauren.
Sixty seconds. Sixty minutes.
Chad Barron will also join from Colorado.
Oh.
I'm on.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, because I, because stations are absolutely. Please take up some students.
All right, let's, let's get the show on the road. All right, uh, it is three oh five. And you are listening or watching or in person, uh, today is December twenty ninth, the Crowe Board of Directors Special Meeting. It is currently three oh five PM. Um, Lauren, I'd like to ask you, has the meeting been properly noticed?
It was properly noticed.
Okay, and do we have a quorum both online and in person?
You do have quorum in person and online.
Okay, great. All right, uh, I see Pledge of Allegiance on here, um, so let's rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation.
Right, uh, so we'll call the meeting to order at three oh five and we will kick it off with owner comments. Um, so Lauren, do you wanna run through who we have, uh, signed in and then we'll go around online and see who wants to speak up?
We have Don McDonald first.
Hello all, Don McDonald, four oh two Iris, in beautiful celebration. Uh, just wanted to, uh, ask you to be cognizant of two of the most scary words ever uttered to a member of a homeowners association. Special assessment. Strikes fear into the hearts of homeowners and the words special assessment were included in the vigilance package as the number one option, the best option. When we have, last night I checked, I think it was like seven million dollars in the bank somewhere in some account for something. We have a little money hanging out for, for really serious things like playgrounds. So I just want people to bear in mind the words that we use. When you see something like that, you know it is going to, and if you look on Facebook, you'll see people are in, up in arms about the possibility of a special assessment. I think it needs to be made very, very clear that there is no risk of a playground special assessment. And I would hope that way before we ever get to a special assessment that we're smart enough and financially savvy enough to make sure that we don't get there. So I would just ask that we be very aware of the words we use because people pay, they pay very close attention to what goes on here. This is important and, uh, please get playgrounds done. I have no kids, but they look ugly.
The kids?
The kids look ugly on the playground. No, well, they're sad. When they're crying, they're ugly.
Thank you, Don. I apologize terribly that I was late on school traffic. I know, I know. I'm sitting there, I don't get ready for the meeting and it's like, I don't get that agenda one more time, it's like, the meeting is at three. So I apologize to everybody. Um, so who's got the list of who's hearing what about any others? Eric.
Eric Obergard.
That's me, the sign-in sheet got here just a second ago, sorry. Um, Eric Obergard, one one two six Mosaic Drive. Uh, so, um, I'll, I'll continue the, the finances discussion. So when we moved here to celebration and continuing on a celebration, um, I, I think the biggest thing that I wanna reiterate is celebration is not a budget community. Um, you know, we've always not been someone that we've always wanted to go for either the bare minimum or the bare, you know, the bare bones, whatever. Do, um, it was something that came up historically when we looked at things with either, you know, uh, coming up with things that were over our reserve fund that we needed to look at, and that's why we came up with things like capital improvement fund and different things to be able to fund things over and beyond. So I think as we look at this project and, and others as they go forward, you know, we've, we've worked with some real top-notch vendors and some real top-notch, uh, equipment suppliers in the past. Make sure that there, if there's a reason that we're deviating for that, we're getting either the same quality of equipment or the same, you know, level of installation service that we, that we wanna maintain and then also it makes it a little bit consistent for the community as we do that. So that'd be one piece. Um, the other piece, just, uh, looking at, um, the, the packets, so thank you for uploading the, the full package, um, into the system so that we could take a look at it. Um, I think the biggest thing that stood out for me is understanding, um, ASTM values are great, you know, to be able to have that for certification that can be certified for standards and that sort of thing. Um, but if they're not installed correctly, then it just kinda doesn't matter. Um, you know, we could have that. Um, I think it's great that we have, uh, wording in there for a CPSI, a Playground Safety Inspector, to come in and look at things up when they do that, um, which is contingent upon final payment, but I would also, uh, urge the board to consider, um, does it make sense for us to have a CPSI on staff? It's literally a one-day course and it's a hundred five dollars for the exam. Um, so it's not hard. The piece historically that we've had a challenge with is our insurance providers used to require what's called a HIC test, um, HIC Head Injury Criterion Test to be done, where they drop a bowling ball off of a tripod. Um, and that essentially determines whether or not the cert, safety surface works, uh, as intended. Um, so because we can look at something and say it looks right, but until it's actually been tested and verified, we can't really go for sure. So understanding if that's something that Vigilant wanted to include in their packet, understanding if that was included in the, the current bid, but just making sure that we're verifying that, you know, as we move through the process that we don't get hung up with insurance or something like that later down. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Eli.
Craig Filick, fourteen forty-five, six. On behalf, not on behalf, from the boards, I may be up. Um, trying to pull a little bit on Don's comment before, but I'm gonna take it in a different direction. Um, I immediately caught on there, I was talking about special assessments. Um, I, I took it a different way though, as I read the rest of the packet. It was clear to me they weren't really talking about special assessments at all. What was clear to me was there was a complete lack of attention to the packet that was presented in front of me. And that came to me as I read the entire thing. I don't think there was ever any intention for some of those other financing options. It's obvious that we have the money in the bank, so there's been no discussion. Um, I, I, I went through the packet last night, uh, and I sent the board comment, um, about two and a half pages. So I'll start off by saying I appreciate that the board is trying to get this done, and I know this has been a long process, I know this has been a frustrating process. However, as I said in my comments, both from what was presented to you by Vigilant, what was presented to you by your bidders, and honestly, what you presented to them, there are disconnects all over the place. Um, you know, as, as a general comment, I, I was a little surprised last meeting that Vigilant started off admitting we weren't going to be coming to a decision. And the first comment that was made within the first minute was, hey, we still need to gather more information, we're gonna go back to some of the bidders for some things. Yet as you were doing that, at the same time, you were displaying the prices of two of the bidders. Basic acquisition stuff, guys, you can't be disclosing prices of bidders while you're admitting you're still in, in a proposal phase. Um, things like that are compromising the, the entire acquisition that you're trying to do. Um, you really only got one bid that was anywhere close to compliant, and I'd say close, I'd, I'd say within a moonshot. The other ones were just far and away, I mean, two of them didn't bid, the other one, I, I couldn't even make any coherency out of it. Um, the, the one you did get, um, I, I mean, there are disconnects from what you required in the statement of work versus what they bid to. There are, I think, I'm not sure, cause I really couldn't tell reading it, assumptions that Vigilant made on your behalf as to what they intended, for example, the schedule. I could find no mention of a schedule of how long they said it's gonna be, yet written on the summary sheet, it says it's gonna be done in a month. Was it one park in a month? Was it two parks in a month? Was there the inclusion of the permitting process? Their proposal specifically excluded that they were gonna do permits. Your statement of work specifically included that they had to do permits. It's unclear. Um, just trying to go through some of the highlighted ones, e- even the materials to be used, um, whether or not you use an existing padding, your statement of work says it's supposed to be new, their works, their statement of work says it's gonna be recycled. The, the summary said it was also gonna be recycled and reused, so the, the Vigilant summary differentiated from your statement of work. Um, even the final costs, uh, said they were undetermined and still to be negotiated. But you had final costs that were bid on the summary sheet. So again, it's unclear whether or not those were finals or not. I, I do think there was, and it, I realized that particularly because where you're at, there's a, a, a reaction to, to overreact to where you're at and, and put a lot in that statement of work, and I think some of it was burdensome, and that's probably, I think Bill had made the comments before in the last meeting, hey, you didn't get two bids, was that because they weren't interested or whatever? I kinda sensed that's probably the case. Some of the bidders looked at the requirements and said, eh, a little bit, little bit too much there, there's a story there, we don't wanna play in that story. Um, I think the other bidders, it was clear to me, the one that you got some numbers but not all numbers, it was because they didn't understand what you're asking for. I regret it three times, I didn't know what you were asking for about reusing equipment from, from Phoenix Works, so. I think if you guys do look at, I, I hate to say, stop and redo this, cause we've got two kids and we've been watching this for a year. But if you do get to a point of stopping and redoing this, one of my suggestions would definitely be taking a look at the requirements and not over litigating in the statement of work. My last comment I'll make, and, and it was, I, guys, I will say it out loud, it's a frustration, but you had the, the special meeting, I think, four or five months ago, kinda deconstructing what had gone wrong with Phoenix Works, and I had made the comment online about, did you do a background check on them and, and how did you look at them and, and, and how did you come to the contract documents you had? The ta, the template a doc you put in the RFP package is a bidder, they're gonna make an assumption, that's the document I'm gonna look at. It was for exquisite lawn care for landscaping. Completely different from what you're trying to do here, the project-based thing particularly, that you've got extra litigation items in there where you're trying to use somebody's old equipment and you've got all these, a lot of complexities that your lawyer's gonna put in there. Then now when you get into negotiations, if you really want those enforced, you know what your, your offer is gonna do, they're gonna say, hey, guys, that's not what we signed up for, that's gonna cost you a lot more, cause they're assuming a lot more risk. Not including that upfront in a correct format for the several months you had going up to this. Now I guarantee you is gonna leave you at a place where if you try to enforce some of the terms and conditions I think you want, you're not gonna get the price that they just told you, so. I, I, I hate to say, it's time to take a pause. Based on what I read, it's time to take a pause. If your bidder's here and can, can mitigate a lot of this in this meeting and, and close some of these gaps of what I put in the two and a half pages, that's terrific, I would love to see this go on contract. There are some gaps I just don't close based on what was written.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay.
As Vigilant seemed right, comment.
I don't. Anybody? To forward to my.
I know, look, I know we sent them to management, but. But that was just yesterday, so I don't even know if there's a reasonable expectation that they would do that by now.
And Mark was on site in another project.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable that they don't have a response to that currently. We don't have a response to that currently, so.
And I'm not even sure that's the full list of things that I would come up with if I hadn't got the twenty-four hours to read it.
Right, so I did a similar list and a lot of ours were the same, so, I mean, if we wanna get into this, the action. I'm motion to adopt the agenda.
That's second. Second. Yes, please, comment. On favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Thanks, Charles, I was intrigued you were here.
I called the meeting to order.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, thank you for that. Uh, okay, so one action item on the agenda today, and it's a motion to name and apparent for Tesla vendor for the spring park and long-term playground project. Um, I have a motion.
A motion for discussion.
Derek, for discussion, second.
And so I wanna say that this is, this is worded exactly how I requested it. Uh, because this is, I think, what is important and what is causing a lot of confusion on what, what's going on here. The intent of this motion is to name an apparent success under, not to sign or execute a contract, that will need another vote. This is to take the steps, to go through any additional documentation that would be required for the contract, determining which part of our contract they're going to go with. Um, ask the questions that people have provided feedback on, ask the questions that we have as board to start the conversation with this contractor, to make sure that they understand what they're doing, that Vigilant understands what they're responsible for, and we understand what we're paying for at the end of the day. At the end of all of that, we will present the contract to them and then vote that this, if they change their prices, if anything happens with, with our conversations, then there will be a vote to approve the contract for the playground. So that was my intent of the motion and why it is worded as such. I believe there's or, as people have said here, there are more things that need to be clarified and discussed, but we have to uh, show good faith to this contractor that we are intending to go forward with them, so we can have these conversations and they can put the time and effort and money into answering the question.
We're in a position right now where, where, you know, to, to Greg's point, I'll, I'll get into some of my comments in a little bit. To, to get to a notice of award, you, you have to be able to do a full and fair comparison of, of what you have in front of you. And we, we really have half, maybe quarter done proposals and, and really larger systemic problems with this procurement. Um, I, I think Greg's email and his public comments were spot on. We, we, we have a lot of deficiencies in how this went to market. The RFP itself, um, the, the market told us basically what, how they felt about this, and, and I think we're seeing this, and I, I, I really don't think we're in a position to, to do any type of award. We really haven't evaluated, uh, what's out there. Um, the, the responses are, are very inadequate. The scope of work was way too complex. And, and I think we're, we're, we've lost really the best practices of a good procurement. And this is all gonna work out downstream with, with garbage in, garbage out. This is going to hurt us when we go and pour the concrete and get into the product. So I, I, I think this is very, very premature at this point.
I pretty much agree with everything that Jared said. That, that's a question, but that's contingent on whether it's fixable, and that's a, and that's for our consultant to to answer, whether the comments and the questions are something that can be cleared up with, with further clarifications between the bidder, which would be three sixty and ourselves, as well as, uh, in the final contract and agreement. So Vigilant, following all this, is it something that can be repaired? Obviously, there's flaws here, but is it fixable? Uh, because I think the overriding goal has always been to get these playgrounds fixed, uh, not at any cost, but if this is repairable, then we should consider that.
I think the.
I think it is.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I think three sixty rec has been very, very open, responsive. They already got their certificate of insurance. The timeline is four to six weeks. I'm sure they would be open to like coming in and like hammering out the little details to make sure we're all on the same page, there's no unknowns or gaps or no, you know, no surprises later. If that's something that we wanna arrange with them.
I was gonna add that I, I've heard arguments that the RFP is, is inadequate. I feel that this is the strongest RFP we've issued this year. Um, we're also dealing with an RFP that is someone else's mess that we're asking someone else to clean up. That immediately, in my opinion, has everyone wanna back off. No one wants to get involved fixing someone else's problem. No contractor wants to do that ever. The fact that we've found one to even get this far is, I think, very hopeful. Um, I don't think that the timeline was compressed because we gave two extensions on that, so, so before we actually reviewed this, there was a reasonable time for this bid. I do wish we had more, I think we all wish we had more, but I really think that that is because we're dealing with someone else's work and someone, now we're asking another contractor to take the liability of this. And that's why we're in this situation.
I'm not hearing that it's inadequate. What I'm hearing is that it's too complex.
Uh, yeah, and it's probably too complex because we have to, we're not writing, we're not saying here, build a playground. We're saying, we have part of a playground, but we don't know if it works, and you're gonna be responsible if it doesn't work, but we know you didn't do that work, and, but make sure this all works when it's done. Oh, and don't forget to do the turf, and oh, there's this other playground that we need, all this other stuff on. So it is complex because that's the situation that we're just in by the circumstance.
There is some complexity in the actual RFP that would say, oh, the contractors, I don't wanna get involved in it, I don't answer those questions, it's not worth my effort. Uh, and that happens, it's not atypical.
Yeah.
But, but maybe we, maybe we misread the situation with, with trying to repair the equipment, because I, I, I think Phoenix Works installed that. Well, we're talking about repairing equipment, why aren't we just now settling with just replacing all of it? And aren't we going to at some point down the road, eh, come across this again with, with liability and risk with trying to repair the thing? That, that's where I'm going with this. I just think the, the lack of market interest and the risk to us really in trying to repair this, I don't know, i- it, it just doesn't, it doesn't sound good. And, and again, I think the market's telling us that there's no interest in repairing it. They, they wanna replace it, and we, we have the reserves. We have the funding to do this the right way. I, I just, I can't see a scenario where we can just, you know, try to fix this stuff and, and with some level of competence. And, and really, you know, I, I wanna go to Vigilant, um, I, I wanna spend some time talking about the, the RFP and the evaluation. And I, I'm really disappointed with Vigilant, frankly. Um, we, we issued the RFP, we, we can litigate the RFP all day with, with some of the things that were problematic there. But you applied your own subjective lens. You, you didn't follow the proposal documents, you didn't follow the RFP that was issued. You basically led this as a price-driven marketing. You focused on this cost template. Um, you were piecemealing some of these other things. You, you didn't follow our directions, and this was, it wasn't a price-driven marketing, it was a can you comply with our asks marketing? And that didn't happen. It didn't happen, and, and you, I, I don't know the directions that you gave to the market, but, but clearly that was borne out in, in what we got back. And again, we can, we can point back to the RFP, and there are problems with the RFP. Um, but, but visually, I, I, I'm confused with, with what you did, and again, to Greg's point, I, I'm, I'm confused by, we're, we're going back to vendors, we're opening bids, we're, we're doing all this stuff. Th- this has been a mess of a procurement. And I just, I, I don't see a lot of best practices going on here.
Well, I am racing as fast as my donut tire will allow me to race to this board meeting so that I can address some of these things face-to-face, but if I can, this is Mark Kramer from Vigilant Services. I would respectfully disagree with a little bit of what you just said, simply because the RFP is the written direction, and that kicks the ball off. From that point on, there are site meetings, there are face-to-face, there's a lot that we do with the vendors themselves, but it is true that we want to, if I could, we want to have all the cost put forward onto our cost breakdown worksheet so that we can have an apples-to-apples-to-apples comparison. It's just a template, and it's titrated from the exact verbiage of the RFP. I don't think it confuses the issue, but we hold the RFP as written by, um, Grand Manners as sacrosanct. And we didn't, we didn't rewrite it or do anything like that, and I think it's a good RFP, and we just wanna make sure that in this time of year, we don't necessarily have market forces per se telling us what they will or will not do. Let's face it, I mean, in feast or famine, we're definitely in feast, and we're definitely in the holiday season when we started soliciting these vendors. So we did have one vendor that actually kind of responded the way we wanted to, but not fully. And we just wanna make sure that we're talking about this in a, in an objective way. We got, we got data back that isn't quite what we want as Vigilant. And therefore, we said what we said in the last board meeting about, hey, we do not sanction any cost data until it's in our format, and we don't because of our reasons. This is what we do for a living, and that is why it is important to present to a board which we sanctioned. We did not sanction anything.
Okay, but, but you sanctioned a proposal. Let, let me read you, proposal documents require, the following documents and forms in the following arrangement must accompany each proposal or alternate proposal submitted. Bid response form, we, we got one, that's seemingly compliant. Did we get a copy of Exhibit A, scope of work, signed and dated? That's a question for Vigilant. Did any vendor supply that?
No.
Signed and dated copy of work, no. Right, correct.
Did any vendor supply a complete project schedule?
No.
No.
Take that as a no. Did any vendor supply the subcontractor contact information? Did any vendor supply a sworn notarized statement of contractors' experience, equipment, and personnel? You didn't follow.
Okay, we gotta press pause there. No, 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 timeout, timeout. We, the RFP, I wanna make sure that everyone who's on a call can also understand this too. This is not an argument. What we're trying to understand here as Vigilant is, does our client, the board, understand what went out? We sent out your RFP. It's not that Vigilant didn't follow the direction of the RFP, it's that the vendors didn't follow the direction of the RFP. I wanna make sure that's abundantly clear. That's why we don't sanction that the board call what we received an official response, because no one follows the format. Why, I, I wanna make sure that's abundantly clear. Vigilant did everything that the board wanted us to do. We sent forward the RFP. The RFP was not followed by the vendors. Vigilant did not do anything wrong.
Well, we did follow up with them and request those items again, and of course, we only got partial information back.
Correct.
But if we were to go with three sixty, if we were to go with three sixty, uh, all those documents would be provided, uh, assuming they wanna go forward before we would sign a contract, correct?
Correct, cause the RF, the scope of work will be in, like an exhibit to their contract, like they're signing. Correct. Cause the RF, the scope of work will be in like an exhibit to their contract, like they're signing off on the scope of work. They already have their certificate of insurance. They, um, they will have a timeline. I mean, they gave the beginning and end, you know, how long did it take them to do the project? But like we were trying to tell in the last meeting, to have vendors get into this, like you said, it's already hard to find vendors that are interested in fixing somebody else's work. It's also, you know, they do hundreds of bids a year and get, you know, a percentage of them. They don't want to spend all this time getting a certificate, building out, you know, a nat chart for timelines. Signing, you know, they do, it's, it's hard to get them to do all those when they don't know if they're even going to get the bid. But I think they're at the point where they're committed enough and they're responsive enough. I think they will do anything we want them to do at this point.
But, but you've evaluated the costs. So the, the whole point of requesting this information, when, when you look at a signed scope of work, it's in order to be able to see who is taking deviations to this so that we have a, a grouping of two, three, four vendors. We're able to compare these apples to apples to apples. You're looking at the price. You're focusing on price only. That's the point of collecting this information upfront. I, I, I'm struggling with, you, you were the owner's rep, but you're also running this RFP for us, correct?
Correct. But we, we have to press pause on this though, because we, we as vigilant collectively chatting myself on the phone and I'm the owner of the company. I don't, I really don't understand the gentleman's comments relative to this RFP. Like I said, I'm, and that's why I'm really anxious to get in the room because there may be something I'm not seeing that may be in front of you. The, the RFP came to us and we sent it out and we get cost data off of the RFP. On the cost breakdown worksheet, we require that the vendors attest to what scope of work they received in one of the cells. That's part of the cost breakdown worksheet response so that we know that they're affirming that they use the scope of work that was sent out, whatever date it was. Um, if that's the case, then the data they put on the cost breakdown worksheet is in compliance with the scope of work, whether we, you know, agree with it or not. I'm just wondering what really is, is the item of disagreement at present?
The, the item of disagreement, Mark, is we, we asked for that to be signed and dated and that there's some level of acknowledgement that they're going to comply with it. You're inferring that just by putting it on the cost spreadsheet, as I'm understanding this, that, that, that we have to assume that they're, that, that we're asking for that to be signed and dated. We're asking for them to return that to us. And again, th- this was a can you follow directions marketing? Did they return
Right. So again, you have an option. And if they didn't, which they didn't, then in the last board meeting, you heard us say, hey, we can do one of two things. You can give it more time so that people can get into compliance or solicit brand new vendors or other. We're not saying you did the wrong thing by specifying that folks sign and date the scope of work. I'm just saying that I am not a vendor, nor am I there shoulder to shoulder with them saying, hey, sign this darn thing. If they choose to do it or choose not to do it, we do not have to accept it. But we can just go back as we often do and say, hey, you missed something. Hey, you missed something. Hey, you missed something. But that's the best one can do. I'm saying that I just want to make sure it's clear. We didn't cross out the requirement in red ink. We kept all the requirements in. I just can't control what the vendors will or will not do, unfortunately.
But you're sanctioning three sixty.
And so far as if you had to make a decision in a confined period of time, we are sanctioning three sixty as interested and adequate to move forward. If you have an indefinite period of time or more time, better said, then let's just get all vendors into compliance as would be appropriate and make a correct decision off of true compliance. I just want to make sure it's clear. Again, vigilant is not recommending that we have guns to our head and must sign with this vendor. We're just saying that if you wanted to sign and schedule, we're really, you know, a big deal to this, um, client, which sometimes it is. Three sixty is your vendor that is most compliant. But yes, we can go back to all vendors and insist on compliance before which time we make a decision for sure.
If we were to start over, in other words, recheck the whole process and start over, uh, what's the timeframe on that? Sixty days, ninety days?
I'd say a good sixty days, only because people restart their engines in the new year a little bit slower than, you know, you would want them to. But I really don't even think we need to restart. I think we just need to get on the phone and go to the offices and just reinvigorate, if I can say it that way. I honestly do not think all is lost at all. I just think that there are some vendors that reflexively put things into their own format. Don't really read every little nook and cranny that's on them, not on vigilant. And we can just gently, as is our process and our demeanor, get them into compliance if allowed to do so. But we're a pen in the board's hand. We honestly will do whatever you ask us to, if, as, as long as it doesn't violate our own secret sauce and ethics. And right now we don't sense that there is a rush to get a vendor under contract. But if you did have a rush, three sixty would be my vote. That's it.
So how long would it take to do a distilled down version of the RFP? I guess it's because you're saying sixty days. Cause, cause I think that's, as, as I've looked at this, that seems to be the, the, the failure in, in the actual RFP. If we did this in a distilled down version that balanced the protections we need with the ability to get responsive bids, because I, I think we need to keep in mind that this RFP, I, I, I don't think that this is something that, that likely they're, they're accustomed to responding to. This was too complex. There were too many requirements. We, we need to just get this down to what we need to protect ourselves, get the things that we need and get responsive bids. So I mean, what would that look like from the vigilant side? Just out of curiosity? I assume you can distill this down into a much more simpler, straightforward RFP. What are your thoughts?
I would say
I think we could do it. Go ahead.
Sorry. I was just going to say within, you know, two weeks and change, we could have a distilled RFP. Again, to use the word distilled, I don't want to falsely imply that the RFP were too broad ranging or complicated for the general audience. If, if you were to give me the objective comment, I would say that, you know, for a playground project, it was a little bit long. It was a little bit long. So we would like to work with Grand Manners. So by the way, typically when vigilant is hired to do what we do, we write the RFP, we write the scope of work, we send it out. We saw that Grand Manners wrote an RFP and it was quite good. It was a little long, but it was quite good. So we sent that out. But if we wanted to get it down to the cliff notes, we could work with Grand Manners in a two, two and a half week timeframe to do so. I don't think without any issue whatsoever.
I would be strongly against changing the RFP because we all, we all agreed to the RFP months ago. It's been two months since this RP was written and now today is when it's being questioned as it's too complex to reduce anything just, we all, we all agreed to issue that RP. Did we not?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, we all agreed to the RFP. We all had the document. We all provided feedback on that document. We all agreed to the RFP. To change it at this point is just, all we will be doing is taking out liability. I don't think it's a complex RFP. I think it's not a great RFP for anyone because like I said, it makes everyone else's stuff, but there's nothing that should come out of it that would be beneficial to getting more numbers. Also, I think that three sixty's number is actually right in line with the previous contract of what we had set aside to finish this project. So don't know why we wouldn't continue the conversation with them to have them bring in the loose ends and provide the documentation to ensure that they're going to do this for our original RFP.
My suggestion is give me, after the holidays, I will give a three sixty goat, like even if it's shoulder to shoulder, go through your RFP, at least give me one shot to let him fill in those gaps and sign off on it. It seems like we're so close. You know what I mean? Instead of redoing the RFP, like some people are saying, or, you know, maybe there's just one, one thing he's like, I can't do that. Or, you know, and we'll come back. But I think he's, I think they're very reasonable and they understand the RFP. We just need to make sure all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed for the board and the RFP requirements. I don't think that's out of reach.
I, I, I can understand how you're, you're saying they understand the RFP when, when these are incomplete proposals, but I guess
But I think they, the scope of work, I think they fully understand.
But we don't have an acknowledged scope of work. You're saying that we would do this after we notify them that they are the apparent winner. And then what happens? Then they come back and they take twenty devia, that, that's what I'm struggling with. The, the point of getting that upfront is so that you could look at three, four vendors and see, all right, three sixty taking deviations here. Outdoor Living Pro is not taking it here. It's, it's another supplement to the pricing. Which again, is another failure in the RFP. We didn't have a valuation criteria. Again, a lot of this is hindsight. We did issue the RFP and sent it out. Fine. But obviously the market is telling us something different. It doesn't mean that we should move forward with it. I, I, I can't see a scenario where we move forward with it. It's just poor judgment.
Cindy's been trying to, it's okay. I know that we can see me opening my mouth. Uh, Mark's here now. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. So sorry.
That's okay. So this is for you and Chad. So in your opinion, as our project manager, would there be any value to sending out an RFP that you author as you normally do for your clients? Approaching it from not a fix somebody else's mistakes scope, but we have this playground. Tell, you know, tell us how to make it usable, kid friendly, you know, and as if it's a new project.
Right.
And not ask them to go in and fit, you know, it's like start from scratch to come and look and say, well, you know, the sliding board is, is good and, you know, um, you know, this isn't, this shouldn't be here. This shouldn't be there. This is what we recommend. Would there be any, realizing that will delay the process? Would there be any benefit to that, would you say? Do you think we will get more people, you know, more people to respond? If, no, okay.
And what I, what I'm saying is for those that can't, um, see me on camera or other, what we know from doing this for a living since 2016 is that the best vendors, like I said in the last meeting, are usually the ones that show the most interest. And the most important thing I could say in this forum is that an RFP as a bunch of words on a piece of paper submittal is only a tenth of the whole process, right? You can't, it's not a, it's not a fantasy. It doesn't catch everything. What it does is it kicks into your interest. Okay. I read the RFP. Now I'm coming on site. Now I'm bringing with me a sense of, okay, I got some intelligent questions formed and I'm going to go look at the site and I'm going to walk with vigilant and we're going to really, you know, talk all things out. Where I think the real benefit to this team would be is in reinvigorating, to use that term again, um, in 2024, the same RP not rewritten, because it costs money to rewrite an RFP. And it does reset the field in terms of the time standpoint. So I want to make sure that it's known that I, I certainly do feel like a little bit long, but not inadequate is this RFP. What we just need to see is eyeballs to eyeballs, more conversation had on site between the vendors and vigilant beyond just three sixty, if it weren't so once. And we'll work everything just fine. I guarantee you, it's a playground project, which is a blessing because it's not terribly complicated. It has very, very few mechanics to it, right? So we just want to make sure that the responses that we got or the lack thereof is an indicator to me of two things, not disinterest, probably time of year, probably time of year. And that's okay. If we reinvigorated in 2024 and if the board has a little bit more latitude to give from a schedule standpoint, I would think that in the confines of three weeks, maximum four, we'll be able to give you a brass tacks answer of, okay, here is the real interest put into the format that we wish. Because when we go back to three sixty and we meet with them again, if allowed onsite, that's going to be one of the sharp criticisms. It's like, oh, you're almost it. But this board definitely gave you low marks for not answering the questions that it put forward the way that they wanted them answered. But it's definitely solvable. It definitely, I am sorry, the RFP all over again, in my opinion. Just my
And that's important.
Ask this question. There were things that worked and there were actually absolute ambiguities. There were things where they explicitly took deviations. You said A, they said B. That's my challenge. And that was my earlier comment when you were on, on the line was, how were you reconciling? They've, they've come up and said permitting thing. They supposedly said they're not doing permitting. The underlayment, they're supposedly saying they're using, reusing underlayment when you said use new underlayment or the RFP.
Yeah.
So that's my challenge when you're saying go back out and sort of tweak it. Half of these documents, I, I, I don't think that's a big thing. But if, if, if you're saying in the RFP, there's a line that says the schedule, Crowe is going to give preference. If they haven't even given you a project schedule, how are you all of a sudden coming to a down select to say three sixty is the right guy when you don't have schedules for any of them?
Again, we're not saying three sixty is the right guy. We're saying that if you had a gun to your head and you had to pick a vendor, pick three sixty. Um, two, if you want, and this is very important, the vendors that do not follow the format, like I said on the phone, are the vendors we don't sanction, right? So we want to be, follow the format. We don't have to rewrite the RFP to get them to follow the format. We just have to have a little bit more time to say, hey, I don't know why you didn't read this as carefully as I would have. But you need to follow this format. You need to submit this. If we say submit this, you need to do underlayment. If we say to do underlayment. It's as simple as that. I'm just giving you a gut feel, gut, that's all. That three sixty is probably your right vendor based off of their interest level. But from an acumen standpoint, they don't get high marks because they didn't follow the RFP. So I'm not, I'm not I want all of our vendors to actually follow the format. When we write an RFP, it's an IP, in a larger project, twenty million dollar project. It's an item of immediate disqualification if they don't follow the format. In a playground project, I'm just trying to be a little bit more genteel because I sense that there is not a plethora of good vendors that do this type of work very, very acutely. And we happen to have ensnared a couple of them and they want to work for celebration. I can just tell that. Again, I can't, I can't tell you empirically on an RFP response why they feel or I feel they're going to do well. I'm just giving you my gut feel. Cause a little bit of this is from the gut. But yes, I do recommend, like I said before, that we get everyone into compliance. It's the only way, if I'm doing this from an engineering standpoint, I can sanction vendors is only if they follow the format. Which is what this motion is for. Just to be clear.
Cindy. Well. Mike.
You first, please.
So but what I understood you to say right now is we are not, we are not going to, we are not going to approve this motion. You're going to go back to the others and say, you know, we really would like to see you in this mix. Will you, you know, will you add this? You're not just talking about three sixty, are you?
Right. No, no, we're not. And to be honest, the motion, whenever the motion came forward, it was only because I was changing a tire. I couldn't quite hear the motion. But that, but I have no, I have no dog in that, in the hunt because I'm, I'm a vendor. I'm not a board member. So whatever the motion is, it's good and we'll, we'll use it, but I don't, I don't know what the motion.
Well, Jared, Jared is the one who called the meeting and his idea, and correctly from wrong, Jared, his idea is that we would like tend to, tentatively approve three sixty as a vendor for this project. Am I correct, Jared?
Yeah.
Okay. And pursue it more with them. But what I'm hearing you say is another choice would be for you, you to take a couple, three weeks, go back to these others, say, you know, we'd really like you to be involved in this. You know, we've heard good things about you, blah, blah, blah. You know, they're anxious to get this project done. We'd like to give them options. Can you please give us that and the other thing? Open there.
Actually, now that I understand the motion, and this may be ultra confusing to everyone, I like that idea. Well, that's motion on table. So we're not changing that at this point.
Well, but he was misunderstanding.
I understand, but that's, there is no second motion right now. That is what we're discussing right now. No, 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 I understand. And, and, and again, from the gut, from the gut, because I could talk from the gut a lot better on this project than I can on a twenty million dollar project. Is we can make three sixty successful. One hundred percent. And I bet you if we had fifteen vendors and we did a five month extension, three sixty would still be the down selected choice. That is only a from the gut response. But I like their numbers. Their numbers actually made sense for what they wrote, even though it wasn't exactly what I want. But we still, let's say if we had to make three sixty successful, I still need them to get all of the compliance issues worked out. They still have to respond to the letter of the RFP. They still would have to be forced to do that. And we would have to be a little bit of a, I don't know, slick in not telling them they, they got the job before they got the job to keep them engaged, right?
You're one of the finalists.
In essence, but like I said, I mean, we're, we're in a lower risk standpoint because we don't qualify vendors that are like the prior vendor, right? And we have a couple of checks and balances that, you know, vigilant didn't insert. It was grand manners, which are good. And they're going to keep you in check from an ultimate inspection standpoint. But I just, I, I think that that's the best way to go. We come at three sixty with compliance. We make sure that they submit their answers to the board, that the, that the answer that the board wants We make sure that they submit their answers to the board, that the that the answers that the board wants and that we make them successful. Cause I guarantee you, they're gonna be the vendor you choose.
So three sixty plus the other vendors, no?
No, I'm.
I thought he said, well, that's what he did say, but he didn't understand the motion that was on the table, but then once I clarified for him, he agrees with Jared that we should. We should pursue this three sixty vendor and have them give us all the information that we need to back up the decision. That will probably end up with anyway, even if we had ten vendors.
Correct. And and just one last thing, because I've been very talkative and I'll I'll shut up in a second, but I I'm gonna defer to Chad too. The, when you do an RFP and you solicit and you bring people onsite and you start working with the vendors. We did talk to every, nearly every single vendor. The only vendor that came back with anything of substance and was engaging and wanted to work was honestly, it was just three sixty. And I can't tell you why, but they were. And that's where I know that they're probably the one that is best suited for the job. Cause they asked the right questions, still didn't follow the format, but they're they're eighty percent of the way there. The other vendors had very, I would say, just staccato responses to what we put forward, and that's very not normal.
Two things I wanna add. We have a number from three sixty. That will not be their final number, so I don't want anyone to be surprised about that because if they don't have permits in their bid, they're going to have to put permits in their bid. It will be up to them to decide if they're gonna charge and what they're gonna charge. Likely that will change. And a lot of the notes that Greg has and that I have and that other people have need to be integrated. So there is a minimum two weeks of negotiating to be had. So I don't want anyone to be surprised by that because that's just the reality of what we're doing here. And the second thing is, I, what we're doing is a very standard construction practice. We are saying, we're going to go and interview our finalists for the bid. In this circumstance, there just happens to be one. And that's who we're interviewing. We're doing the final bid interview before we execute a contract. This is completely standard on every construction.
Correct.
After what I heard, we think we're gonna pick them. You you're in a competitive acquisition. Going out to the market and saying, give me multiple bids. And yet you're sitting here saying, I I think the words were, I feel this is gonna be the right company, so we're gonna enable them to be successful. You have now flipped this bid around and said, that's the company we want based on a noncompliant proposal and other noncompliant proposals. But this one is the least noncompliant, so we're gonna take them and push them across the finish line. I just want, I I'm putting it in different words, but that's what I heard. And that's scary to me considering where we're at. Guys, if this was installing garbage cans around town, whatever, do what you're gonna do. I'm gonna put my kids on top of these things. We've had problems for a year with these playgrounds and we're now flipping this thing around to, in your contractor's words, to make them successful. These companies should be successful on their own two feet.
Well, to that point, this is the playground contractor that installed the Island Village playgrounds. We already know their work in town.
And there are fifty other content, and and I'm I'm struggling with the fact that this is the only contractor. There are fifty other, listen, I can get you five by Monday. Between Osceola County, Orange County, Orange County School District and Osceola County School District. By Monday, I guarantee I can get you five qualified bidders that weren't on this list. That would at least bid and get you a competitive acquisition for people who know how to do this kind of. This is not the only company in a fifty mile radius that knows how to do this. And I'm not a playground guy, but I know that.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing with you. I provided names myself and. I don't know how many made it on this list, but we only got four. I gave six names, only four bid.
Chad, why did we, why did we use these vendors specifically?
Those are the ones uh from what I got in the emails from Grand Manners was these are the four. Vendors or whatever, and that's who we sent it out to.
It was also Jared's list too.
That's who these four are?
Your list was provided and we provided two.
An additional.
And then an additional.
So it was more than four then?
Yeah, there were more than four people soliciting.
Five.
We spoke to, we spoke to. We spoke to eleven vendors.
Okay.
To try, just to vet them out and have some type of list to provide to vision. The biggest issue is, as you said, Jared, all of the contractors that declined to bid. Was because they did not want to work on it. They were, one, not willing to work on playground equipment that they did not source. Or they did not start with because of the liability. And two, they were not willing to take on the liability of a project that was poorly installed.
And and I'm, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but I gotta pull on that thread, guys. When we're saying tra- changing the RFP, no one's saying that nobody here knows how to write an RFP or whatever else. I've read it through it and the documents were clear and all that kind of stuff. We're saying changing an RFP, that's exactly what I'm zoning in on is the market is telling you, it's good that you went through the process. But now that you've gone through the process, the market has told you, guys, this is a scary proposition to sit here from a liability perspective as a vendor and say. You are in active litigation with the company who walked away from this and all of a sudden you're asking somebody else to come in and fix their mess?
Yeah.
That's considering, that's why I'm saying when you change your RFP, it's not saying anybody failed here, but the market's telling you, guys, this is not a viable scenario.
Yeah, and that goes back to what I was saying about, may maybe we need to revisit honestly, the entire scope of repairing this thing. And and I think, again, the market is dictating that this is, this is a liability. And again, for us downstream. Do we want to take on that liability ourselves?
How do we change the liability? The liability remains.
No, like what I said, he's saying rip out the existing equipment, get nits.
The sunk cost, I mean.
Sunk cost. What's the lawsuit when a kid falls off that thing?
Right.
Because of, because there was a construction defect that neither one of the companies could cover.
Cindy, before you do that, let me, I was trying to.
Patrick Paul, I wanted you to go first.
That's okay. Everybody's acknowledged this is a. It's a lousy situation. So that sets up some really bad dynamics for our normal process, right? So it's just not typical. So it's gonna have a lot of bumps and bruises in it. So let's recognize that. I think you can get a little, you can go back to it over, take it the way it is now, sit down with the vendor, see if you can work it out. Yeah, those are all viable things. I can tell you, I made a suggestion back at the beginning of this thing and said, why don't we talk to the county? And Greg just mentioned the county. Probably isn't anybody that has more, is a better subject matter expert in terms of parks and playgrounds. In the, in the community, in our area. And we should have a relationship with the county. We can say, hey, what's your internal expertise? What do you have there that could come and look at this? Who are your captured vendors you can do business with? That maybe if you put your arm on them and said, hey, we've got these friends of ours over in Western Osceola in Celebration. They need this project looked at and need something done here. Would you go scope it out for us and so on? But when you're in a, an ugly situation, which we are, you go to the person with the most expertise in the marketplace. That'd be the school system, that'd be the Osceola County, Don Fisher, the county manager. Go and talk to those people. I mean, we're, we're chasing vendors and trying to persuade them to do something with what we have. Uh, I think if we had a subject matter expert look at it and assess it for us. As opposed to these third party vendors whose pure motivation is economics. I think we'll have a little bit of a friend in the county that maybe would give us a better, more valuable opinion. He thinks what's going on. I could be overestimating what kind of internal expertise they have. I don't know how much captured they have. But I know they've probably got several vendors that are probably preferred vendors they work with, and they could probably find some expertise there for us.
Typically, the AHA will never recommend vendors. They should never.
Just like. Yeah, yeah, okay, I know. I've been there, done that a hundred times.
Well, the county does have vendors already on staff. I mean, I know that from C D's perspective. They they haven't existed.
Public sector, we can easily go in and see who bid on it too. I mean, there's, there's plenty of, and and even, you know.
Hang on, there was a conversation going on. You probably can't hear just a minute.
Cindy, let me finish with this. Don asked about Disney and I think they're insular and I don't think they would do it. But there's an inherent uh desire with the county to do something in Western Osceola. I mean, they just, they they don't have any representation, representation of parks here. But we have the ball fields being built. They wanted to get into a partnership there and turn that into one of their things on the map, remember that?
Yep.
So here's a chance for them to come and give us a hand with a park. And certainly people outside our community come and use the parks and so on. So why do we lean on that? Inherent desire that I think they have, at least find out. Problem is, we didn't even ask the question, which I think is a real miss. So we may go and ask them, then take Lauren to make one phone call to Don Fisher and say, here's the situation, and she'd know in one hour. Whether it was something worth pursuing, what the next steps would be, and we could either rule that in as an opportunity to look at this differently or not. But end of story.
And those two playgrounds are open to anybody because they're not then stand.
They probably build just.
I agree. I don't count with you. Yeah, I I would bet there's a synergy between the school district and the the county from a playground perspective. I think you'll find the linkage there. Be foolish if there wasn't.
Great idea.
Yeah, I think that the piece in, in, oh, sorry, Cindy, can I? Okay, um, I think that I. The, the other piece that I was surprised at, and this might just be because there was a historical transfer of knowledge between the management companies, is. Rep Services, who is the company that we've used previously in the community, based out of Longwood. That have done a lot of the playground installations for the stuff that we're now replacing, you know, twenty years later. They were the ones that, they were a vendor that we've used previously. They're Disney's vendor. They were the ones that were trying to get us to buy the Food and Wine Festival. Uh, playground equipment when um LSI, when Landscape Structures was going to throw it away. Um, but we were offered to to purchase it from them. So I I think, yeah. And uh, I think that so there's an opportunity to look at some of those relationships that we had previously. And see if it's worth, you know, reinvigorating those. Um, but I, there's also a part of me that also goes, yes, we've spent a hundred ninety thousand dollars on playground equipment. We've, we've done this work already, but there is, as as Greg has mentioned, others have mentioned, there is a point where the market's telling us. We don't want to be involved in this. So would we get more interest if it was just dirt? And and we say, yeah, we sank a hundred ninety thousand dollars, but in the grand scheme of things of our budget, I'm not saying that's not a lot of money. Not a lot of money. Um, and we're looking at something where this isn't something that we're replacing every year. It's something that we're looking at for a long term investment. And quite honestly, the playground stick around for twenty years, you know, before we replace them. So there's a part of me that says, I don't think that that should be just completely dismissed. I think we should look at saying, if we went back to vendors and said, would there be different interest if we paid someone else even just to? Get rid of everything and you have dirt here and we want to put a playground in. And there's a new architect or new whatever involved and you can use whatever equipment you want and put forth a proposal. And you start from scratch at that point in time. I just, I don't think that that should be completely dismissed.
And and two, the three sixty proposal, you know, from a timeline perspective, what I saw, they they said, what, a month? Vigilant, is that what they, so I mean, we're we're not talking about.
They came back with four to six weeks.
Okay, so, you know, a- again, if if you start talking about, you know, a reduced scope, change the scope. You just slightly modify the RFP, what have you, put it back out to market. A couple of modifications here and there, you know, it it could really work to our benefit. In the long run, I I I think going forward with anything today is really short sighted and it is gonna hurt us. And I think procurement has been such a pain point for us in in every single way. So this is just acknowledging that that it's okay. And I think this is probably an opportunity for us too, and I had this in my email. We may be able to scale this going forward, honestly. We may be able to really get some best practices out of this and and build a consistent model. I think this is really the opportunity we can, we can change the narrative and really fix this the right way and then build it for future cases.
I think Celia is trying to say something. So. To, I know Jared made a motion. Can we table this until?
I, I don't think we should.
Well, we have to, we have to look, we have a solution.
And and there's, there's several, so some directive needs to be given to management and Vigilant from this meeting.
Right, that, well, that's okay. I worded it wrong.
Yeah, I mean, either way, first, I mean, we need to address the motion on the table. It's my first and second, and we've been having discuss, discussion. So if somebody has a different motion they want to put forward, then we need to call the question on Jared's motion. If you're ready to do that.
So I think I would like to call the question Jared's motion and put forth another. So all in favor of Jared's motion to move forward to.
So you're not in favor of it then?
Well, no, but I, that's what I was saying.
Based on what you just said, yes. If you already have the next thing lined up.
Can we call the question?
Let's call the question. Yes, do you want a roll call vote?
Sure. Charles, oh, I was going with Charles first. Charles, you're first.
Can we read the motion again? Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand what we're being voted on.
Hold on. Motion to name an apparent successful vendor for the Spring Park and Long Metal Playground project. That's the move.
My vote is no. My vote is no.
Is yes.
Elliot, no.
No.
And I'm a no. And I didn't have my mind made up like, you may be here, but after hearing all this discussion. I'm leaning towards starting from scratch as if this was a new project. And, you know, tap into uh any vendors that Greg can. Steal from the county. Are you listening, Greg? Yeah, cool. There you go.
Writing the bill now. What man, maybe we bring, but just a a comment.
Sure, yeah.
So before, at the top of the pyramid was make as is the best as is you can ever make. Now we're changing, which is good, you know, we'll do whatever you want. Two, it's a blank space. Just from a liability standpoint, I'm just gonna make sure everyone knows, including the gentleman who has relationships. Your liability is inherently reduced. If you go with an entity that both designs, procures and executes, and there are, and there are. A couple of entities that we solicited come in and execute, but if you really want to get this like liability reduced. It's the group that designs it, procures it and executes it. That's the best way to go forward.
So I, I want to do. Can I do one more point of indication on this motion? Because I think a lot of this conversation is circling around Spring Park because that's the, the one that's not finished. Um, in terms of long metal, because the RFP does address fixing long metal. Are you including that in tearing down and replacing? Or are we still fixing long metal with existing? Well, we, let's get a motion for something.
Well.
So, as you're saying, as you're saying, the market kinda gave you feedback. That was one of the feedbacks from these vendors is they know, hey, the turf's wrong, it has to go. Adding is great, we don't need to replace it. So I think if, you might want to do them as two different projects. I think long metal can be reused and fixed. Springfield, let's start it as a new. Or Spring Park, let's start it as a new project.
Lakeside is for twenty twenty four, isn't it? So we might as well do three then, if we're doing three new playgrounds.
Oh, I would like.
People are gonna be very excited for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract.
I would like to. We gotta wait on the master plan advisory group because that's a big discussion with them, the lakeside playground.
That's fair, yeah.
Yeah.
I would also say that I think there's questions surrounding the, because East or North Village Playground is also up in the reserve study in twenty twenty four. But we think that we should have the Diane Horne, this, the certified safety inspector come in and look at all of the playgrounds. Just to say, hey, yeah, you should replace this now or no, you're good for a few more years.
She has agreed to that.
Well, there's a couple of things that long metal that need to be replaced. There's a couple of pieces of equipment.
That's the, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I would like somebody who's a certified playground safety inspector to say. This one and do this or, and then the M P can address that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think we need, we need to stay focused on, on the two parks that that we're dealing with right now and and all that. Again, I think this is, we can potentially build out a a great framework that may be something down the road that we can look back and say, all right, you know. This was, this was a successful procurement, let's leverage that. Um, but but with that said, I I I'm gonna try and make a motion here and and I'm I'm certainly open if anyone wants to talk through it. Um, so I I'm gonna make the motion to cancel the RFP, the current RFP. Um, it's gonna be a bit long winded. Notify the bidders of our appreciation for their efforts and that we will be resoliciting in the coming weeks. Based to Vigilant work, kind of distilled down version of the prior RFP, but this one focused on just the placement, not repair. Um, just going back through my notes, focus on adding in additional.
Replacement of Spring Park. Just for clarification.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. Um, add in additional vendors with S Doc, County, additional leads. Um, and then I want to also add one more thing to this motion, two more things. Um, I'd like to consider a finalist meeting for the top two to three. Just to have a public capabilities presentation where we can talk with them. They run through their proposal. Maybe thirty minutes. This is probably the longest motion in history. And then the last one, reestablish a board liaison uh role for the project, because I think we we lost some continuity uh with with the resignation.
What about long metal? This is one, we're doing one at a time then. I would. This is, this is one, we're doing one at a time, I would. I would stop the motion after initial this, I would put the, um. Liaison business and the town meeting business or the last interview process aside for now and just focus on. That okay?
All right, so I'm gonna. All right, so, yes, I will.
I'll second that motion, Charles. All in favor?
What's the motion? Motion to. High vendors that we appreciate their participation and that will be, be reissuing soon. Vigilant will rewrite the RFP to be a complete replacement of Spring Park, not a repair. And the additional vendors will be solicit, solicit utilizing contacts in the county school district. Whoever Greg has as well and anybody else and, um, sorry. That's something pretty different motion. And the rep services is noted by Eric.
Correct. All in favor? Yeah, a very long motion. Well, all I could be just, all that could just be said with expand the vendor pool.
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
All, all in favor? Hey. Always. Long Meadow. Does I understand that a lot of that equipment wasn't installed properly? Is that what I, is that what I've been hearing the last several weeks?
Some, some pieces, the, the grasshoppers were not installed correctly and the, the biggest issue is the art structure.
But then that, and that rock wall that is vertical, like, vertical?
Yes, right.
It should be tilted because five foot drop for a kid to fall off of. At Lakeside, the rock wall is slanted, so if a child falls, they have something to break their fall. But the rock wall there, I've shown Jared and a couple of other people that have been there, residents have complained. Because the kid can come out, not to mention that, that drawbridge or whatever you're walking across. That's, that's not safe either because the kids can fall right through there and hang themselves.
Maybe it's the wrong piece of equipment.
Yeah, even if it's a five-year-old, it says, it says five, but a five-year-old, there's some petite five-year-olds and they can fall right through there. It's like. It's like not safe for the children.
Probably a bad choice to start.
Yeah, bad choice.
Because you can't, you can't monitor.
Who plays on it.
Right, yeah.
Can we just walk through maybe some of the logistics? Sorry, I, um, just with. With, with, so is this going to be a management vigilant, obviously without a liaison? I know Jared, Jared did a ton of work and, and very appreciative of obviously everything that got us to this point. Um, but, but how, how is that going to look? How are we going to, I guess, move forward with, with getting all this in flight?
I mean, you've hired vigilant as an owner's rep and typically as the owner's rep, they would draft the RFP, get board approval of it, and then it would be issued.
So do we have kind of a rough and dirty timeline right now?
Well, this, this will change our contract with them though, because that was not part of the original scope, so we need to. We need to change our contract with vigilant and increase their scope. I would just put that then forward for your simple, yeah, very short.
So we've got to get through that first.
So I don't have a prob, I, I don't understand because Charles has been. Like, on, on top of this the past week. I, I think I would like him to be like the board liaison, but not. Where you need daily updates and not where you need, just for him to be able to communicate back to the board.
I, 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 I think we're okay, honestly, I just, I, I, you know, I, I want to be respectful, honestly, and to the point that we can get some level of consensus. I, I, I'm okay, just as long we, we need, we need to make sure that, that we can run this flawlessly. So that, that would be the direction, um, and, and to management, obviously, and there's obviously a lot going on with the action plan and other things, so. Um, I don't know, just, just food for thought. That's not necessarily a selling point for me, I just, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, because I think that hurt us frankly. I think us not being in, in a position of consensus throughout twenty twenty-three, I think in hindsight, when, when we look at some of our decisions, I think it, it has hurt us, so. Um, I, I'm open to whatever at this point is, is going to get us all on the same page.
Okay, so.
Can I chime in for a second? So being in the last three, three.
Just one second. Hey Chad, actually, they're, they're asking that you press pause so that the board could finish their, um, their final discussions.
No, he, he, he can talk.
Go ahead, Celia. Okay, you're on.
Just a quick chime in, so being in the last three board meetings, like, would it be worth doing like a workshop? With like one member of the board? You know, one or two members of Grand Manners and us just to kind of nail out everything, make sure the RFP. Distilled version is exactly, you know, would be easy for the board to approve. Exactly the structure, do we want to do one park, two park, rebuild, fix one, rebuild one, is that? Something that would be, it doesn't have to be a drawn out two-month workshop, just like a one or two-meeting workshop.
That was my suggestion.
But that's what we did to get where we are now.
Yeah.
That's what I don't understand about all of this, that, we've done all of that and we have this, we've done.
Yeah, but we're going back, we're going back and trying to get it. All right, so I just, I, I, I read something today and it, it just struck me. It was a saying that I read. I'm sorry is a statement because I said it a million times because the resident said, just say sorry. I've been saying, I'm sorry that we got to this point. And it says, we won't let this happen again is a promise. We're trying, we're trying to make a promise to the community. And how do we make it up to the community is to get it right. That's our responsibility. So we're really trying. So hard to get this right because it's been a year. And nothing against you guys, but. That just stuck out of my mind today, it's our responsibility to get this right. So that's how I feel that we're moving forward, hopefully in a right direction.
Well, and I, I think. I think that over the past year, it could have been, part of the problem could have been too many chiefs and not enough Indians. We got too many opinions and too many workshops and too many directions. I think that we should turn it over to the professionals. Let them come back if we need. After the board reviews it, if we need a workshop to hammer out some of the finer details. But I would really like to see you guys and you guys take the ball and run with it. And I mean, that's my opinion. And then. When we need to sit down and, you know, fine tune it or whatever, then we can.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that and I think, you know, if it's workshops and, um, you know, obviously we, we want to go on the, the, the path of least resistance to really get this moving in flight. You know, with, without the need for special meetings and whatnot. But, you know, the goal obviously is to, is to have a successful procurement and obviously have successful playgrounds and, and I want to just say something else, that, this is not. A, a, an easy decision for me at least. Um, I, I have twin seven-year-old boys who frankly are going to age out of the playground pretty soon. Um, but, but as a parent, what, what I'll say is I, you know, as you look at the repair versus the replacement, I, you know, it, it, it doesn't sit with me. And I think it's a better story for the community to, to really fix this the right way, even if it adds a little more time, because we really have to get it right.
Perfect, absolutely. And we just have to make sure that we communicate that to the residents sooner rather than later. You know, why we're doing this. It's just, and the board voted by majority, just to start from scratch and get it right and do it right. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
They just made a suggestion in parallel.
I think we're talking about Long Meadows still.
Your terms and conditions document, I'll say this again, this is what I said six months ago is what Tom needs to work on, not vigilant, this is the fine print stuff. This is what the bidders are going to look at and say, oh my God, these guys are litigious as crazy. And they're going to raise their price or they're going to say it's reasonable or whatever, but this.
Sorry, are you holding up our?
This is what was in the board, this is what was in the board packet that says exquisite landscaping.
Oh.
That you guys put out for RFP, for landscaping. That is not what you would come out with, I pray to God, for what you would put out for the contract. In parallel with vigilant doing their stuff, I would be sending this to Tom saying, give him a week. Give me what would be the terms and conditions and I would review that just as, just as much as you were going to review, review what they put, review what he puts.
Tom issued that.
Well.
Just.
It's exquisite.
Just, yeah.
Then I will tell you, I'm disappointed in what I read. I'll leave it at that, I'm disappointed in what I read, that's.
Just for our. That's your general counsel.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, again, I'm not a lawyer, I play one on TV, that's not what I would put in a contract with where you guys are at right now.
Maybe, maybe interject something at this point. Sure, okay, just as part of our services, you know, we have this tool build of contracts. Most of them for the contracts that we manage are the American Institute of Architects contracts. Of, you know, one-on-ones, one-on-twos, one-on-fours and fives. We have a scaled down version of best practices across the smaller contracts for a contract like this, and believe it or not, actually Chad prepared it. Not trying to, not trying to go around anyone, but we recognize a, kind of like a service's nature to this one. And we just prepared it in the background. But we can bring forward like the two that we use for a project this size just for Tom's, you know, review, that's how we typically do it, we submit our contract, um. Our contract suggestions to general counsel, general counsel usually either, if they're really good. They'll put in language and work with us, if they're really not the best, they put in a massive addendum and they just say, oh, that looks great, but use our addendum and that basically supersedes everything. But we have to defer to Tom, I mean, Tom is the person who is employed to keep you out of trouble. But that is something we could do, we could just submit our two that are best fits to Tom. For whatever they, they say, and if they said, you know, with these things, we would never take offense, that's just something we always just have in the ready. Yeah.
That's good to know. Um, so back to Long Meadow, what do we think in there? I believe that the, the. Is it stands now?
What do you say? Start from scratch, because, well, I mean, what you could do is a additional CYA is have Diane come out and look at it now. Her, make her suggestions from a safety inspection standpoint and then have that lead your path forward.
Is she under contract with us or vigilant?
She, she would be under contract with you guys, she would supply you her.
Or how much?
I, well, we'd have to ask.
Any thousands?
I mean, I can ask her and we can get that. I don't think it would be thousands to inspect one playground.
Yeah, I was being.
Yeah, I can inspect it free.
Yeah.
But then based on what she's saying, if she's saying, no, this whole thing needs to go, or no, this can be repaired, then that would then inform your RFP and then vigilant can take that directive.
We'll do that.
Says on here, equipment needs to be removed, so don't you have the answers in your RFP already?
That was written by, so the bulk of the art, that portion of the RFP. So there's Spring Mark, Park and Long Meadow are split out and Long Meadow is repair or replace.
It says on your Long Meadow. Responsible for removal and proper installation of clean and properly installed equipment.
Yeah, so if it's improperly installed.
So it's up to the contractor to see whether.
It would be there.
And what Lauren is suggesting, there's, there's a person who, I mean, that's what they do, they have a certification and that they're a. Certified Playground Inspector person.
You need that third-party diligence for your. Decision, yeah, you need that for Long Meadow, but you also need it, I would suggest you need it for Spring Park. Because you're making a decision to go to a greenfield, redo this thing, based on a discussion and a vote here. And what's the backup to that? That you came to that conclusion, other than you've got a failed RFP process. We think it's because nobody wants to work with a partial completed. You need a little more diligence tonight, I think, before you just go into community and say, we're throwing this away and start all fresh. Much like with Long Meadow.
So Cindy, if I could, when we looked at this previously, when we had an issue with the turf, it was a different related issue surrounding dunk hoop for any of you that have been here for a while. Uh, sandbox that was there, but, um, one of the things that the CPSI requested at the time was they needed to remove the turf in order to inspect the anchoring of the equipment. See if it was done correctly. So we know the turf's bad, that, that it's got to go anyway. So if you look at Long Meadow and say, we need to remove the turf, turf goes. You have the CPSI come in, inspect the equipment, at the same time, as Mike mentioned, do the due diligence, have them look at. Spring Park and look at it and say, yeah, we can't do this appropriately, or no one's going to be able to accept liability because. We've have a piecemeal vendors or whatever, have Diane or whoever the CPSI is come in and. You know, help state that, so we give backup to the community for it. But then I think if there's pieces that, when we have that conversation with her. As a, as a time savings and cost saving standpoint, if it makes sense for removal of the turf now, because we know that's got to get done anyway, you pull it out. And then the CPSI can come in and do kind of everything at once and look at everything. It's going to be here on the same day, they can come and take a look at both pieces.
Yeah, but if you pull the turf out now, Long Meadow, you're going to have a lot of unhappy. Parents if that closes the park.
Well, I agree. I'm one of them, so, yeah.
But the alternative is having.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that, the, the issue that we have right now is that we're at a public meeting right now, we've stated that the turf is unsafe. So.
Been saying that since the beginning.
And we have the playground open. That's a problem, so. So I think, yeah, I mean, I, I think. The parents in this community being one of them, um, I mean. I'm pissed, I'm disappointed, you know, so.
Well, the grandparent that has to find a place that grandchildren to go.
At the same point in time, I'm lucky enough that, I mean, I'm in Artisan Park, so I don't have a horse on this race anyway, I got to drive to whatever playground I want to go to anyway.
Had to go there.
Different discussion, Greg, uh, so, but I think that for me to say, I'm going to drive to North Village instead because that one is good, or I'm going to drive to Lakeside instead. And use that one. And if you're telling me that the reason why we're taking Long Meadow out of service and you give it a timeline. Then I, it's a little bit more reasonable. And my five-year-old, who is age appropriate for that equipment, has fallen through that bridge and was dangling. And we were one of those pissed off parents that sent an email. So, I mean, I think that it's one of those things where. We've seen an issue and we want to take correction to it, if we state why we're closing something. You get a little bit more breathing room with the community rather than we're just closing it while we figure out the RFP.
Can we slide, can we engage Diane's, her name?
He's going to call her right in.
Can we engage Diane at the same time we move forward with starting the ball rolling? On, because chances are we are still going to start from scratch on Spring Park.
If that's the directive of the board, then that's all.
I mean.
I mean, that's the motion that was on the table and that passed, so.
Yeah, so if you concentrated on Spring Park now, are we getting Diane come and look at both and then? Then rev up Long Meadows, they don't, maybe they won't necessarily both go out at the same time, but. Shortly after Spring Park, Long Meadow, if there's an issue with, whatever we decide.
When you say go out.
The RFPs.
Oh, okay.
Because we're going to do two anyway.
Right. Best to synergize, just, just best practices, um, but we'll do whatever you want, for sure. And meaning that if you had, if you have five playgrounds, don't, in my opinion, phase them out, if you, you can wait. The length of time that is necessary would be good counsel to wait until which time you have all things mature. Group it into one single RFP and then you'll get the economies of scale.
I guess I wanted to say.
Sorry.
I guess what I wanted to say was, you don't have to work on your piece while we get her to come in.
Oh, yes, true, but I'll trust Charles at the end to wait for all the other stuff to catch up, so you can get the economies of scale for, okay.
And I, I would say if she's inspecting, have a look at North Village, because that has been replaced. It's about eight years ago.
Yeah, it seemed odd to me that was up for.
And she'll look at Lakeside also, right?
Well, Lakeside, I looked at Lakeside last year, one of the two pieces of equipment needed to replace it. I haven't been back since then.
Good, so are we?
Me too.
Wait, so are we? We're moving forward with a start from scratch RFP on Spring Park?
Yes. That was the past motion.
Okay, Long Meadow, are we going to wait until we get Diana's evaluation before we? Start on that?
Before you make a final decision on what your motion is and how to deal with it? Yes, you can do that.
That makes sense, okay. And then. While she's here, she'll look at North Village too, me as well, since she's here. So can I get a motion for us to hire her to do these three things?
I'll make a motion.
Well, Jared, you do it.
I'll second it. Jared and Celia. All in favor?
All right.
Anybody? Sounds good. Anything else on, on this issue? And when is the communication going to go out to everybody?
I'll draft something and send it to the board and see, get your comments.
Okay, excellent. Okay, Celia, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Anybody want a second? Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Thanks for the resonance.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.